... to order the Tiverton Town Council meeting of Monday, April 7, 2014. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in visible liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Ruda?
Present.
Counselor Shavit?
Present.
Counselor Lambert?
Present.
Counselor Roderick?
Present.
Counselor Dimondiris?
Present.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Counselor Gerlach is absent.
Thank you. The approval of the consent agenda will begin with a proclamation. Mr. Pelletier?
Yes. Proclamation is National Library Week. The proclamation states, whereas libraries help lives change in their communities, campuses, and schools; whereas librarians work to meet the changing needs of their communities, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside of the library walls; whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community and address local issues; whereas librarians are trained, tech-savvy professionals, providing technology training and access to downloadable content like e-books; whereas libraries offer programs to meet community needs, providing residents with resume-writing classes, 24/7 homework help, and financial planning services to teens applying for student loans, and to older adults planning their retirement. There should be a comment there somewhere. Whereas libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities; whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tiverton Town Council proclaims National Library Week April 13 through the 19th, 2014, and encourages all residents to visit the library this week and take advantage of the wonderful library resources available at the Tiverton Libraries and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better. By order of the Tiverton Town Council, April 7, 2014. Ed Roderick, Town Council President.
Thank you. The consent agenda. Approval of minutes of the regular council meeting, March 24, 2014. Approval of executive session minutes, March 24, 2014. Approval of special meeting, February 22, 2014. Approval of special meeting executive session minutes, February 15, 2014. Approval of executive session minutes, February 10, 2014. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Budget Committee, 10. Harbor Commission. Board of Canvases. Conservation Commission. Prevention Coalition. Pocasset Hills Cemetery Commission. Waste Water Management Commission. Correspondence receive and file. Smithfield School Committee. Opposing H-7757 relating to school committees and school superintendents. Town of Foster. Resolution opposing Senate Bill 2677 and House Bill 7631 relating to the levy and assessment of taxes. A thank you letter from Rachel Peckham Elder regarding Stonebridge Gas Station. A Tiverton School Committee letter to the Commissioner of Education, Deborah Gist, with attached resolutions, elimination of kneecap graduation requirement, and resolution supporting H-7095 regarding Common Core standards. Approval of the tax assessment abatements. John Cudaro, Megan L. Cudaro Memorial Foundation, request permission to hold Sixth Annual Miles for Megan Bike Walk and Ride on Saturday, October 4, 2014, Tiverton and Little Compton, referred to the police chief for recommendation. Scheduling a public hearing on May 27, request by Main Road Properties LLC for zoning map amendment of Platte 706, Lot 106, and Lot 107, from R-80 to V.C. Village Commercial. Planning Board Recommendation, request for moratorium on further V.C. amendments. Scheduling a public hearing on June 9, zoning map amendment and zoning ordinance text amendment to implement Form Base Code zoning, Bliss Corners, and North Main Road, and general changes to use table for commercial uses. Planning Board Recommendation. Approval of Town Council Resolution in support of Common Core state standards. Town Administrator Monthly Department Reports. Any items to be removed?
Mr. President, just 1A.
Okay. I'd like to remove 3C. Anything else?
Mr. President, I just want to make note that on CA 6 and 7, the scheduling of public hearings, we set that date, which is the date we're going for, but there is an awful lot of other notices. If something changes, I'll put on the next meeting that it's going to be a different date, but those are the ones we're aiming for.
Okay. Nothing else? Mrs. Shavit?
For the regular council meeting minutes, March 24, I just want to make note on page 7 of 9, bottom, item number 4, under the town solicitor, I just want to make sure that a note is made that I recuse myself from this item.
Mrs. Mel, you make that change?
Yes.
Yep, at the very bottom.
Yes.
Regarding the Borne Mill Tax Appeal.
Right, we have the recused.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Shavit, I'll entertain a motion regarding CA 1 as amended.
Make motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting, March 24, as amended on page 7, regarding the Borne Mill Tax Appeal.
Second. We have motion in second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, CA 3C. I just want to read this letter from Rachel Peckham Elder from 364 Highland Road in Tiverton. It's dated March 24, 2014. It says, Dear Mr. Roderick, wonderful news. You deserve congratulations and a big thank you from Tiverton residents for the beginning of the end of a gas station on our town beach. I was one of the founding members of the Stonebridge Task Force in 2003, and I had kept this 1991 article 20 years ago from the Secconnet Times, which showed that in 1971, the town was working on acquiring that property. I thought you might be interested in seeing it. I am 78 now, and yes, I was reluctant in thinking we'd ever see a clean beach in my lifetime. Also, good things happening. Thank you, thank you. As stated in the March 6 Secconnet Times editorial, perhaps the best outcome for that view, blocking structure, would be to tear it down. Hope so. My very best to you, Rachel Elder. I'll entertain a motion regarding CA 3.
Second.
We have motion in second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Can I, I'm a little late to the party, can I pull CA 6, just for a quick?
CA 6. Yes.
I just, playing a little catch-up here. Now I've lost my place. And I don't know if anybody's here from the planning board, but, oh, good, she's right there. You've made a recommendation to put a moratorium on any amendments or additions, subtractions, or otherwise, I imagine, from the Village Commercial district. Is that, that's the long and the short of it. Can you just give a 20-second? I just want to try and understand this a little better.
Yeah, just that we recently had a petition for a zone change for two lots, and it was the concern of the planning board that we may get more petitions for piecemeal changes in that area. So what our aim to do is that we'll process the zone change for the whole Village Commercial area in a quicker manner, so that the other parcels that would need to be changed over to Village Commercial will happen as one whole unit instead of having it happen in piecemeal, you know, here and there.
Good. And that's going to be a priority of the planning board going forward. Excellent. Thanks very much.
Okay, Mr. Pelletier, I'll entertain a motion on CA 6.
Yeah, I move that we receive and file the CA 6A and acknowledge the schedule for public hearing of CA 6.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion regarding the rest of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Open public forum and announcements.
Sorry, hang on.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That doesn't automatically set the moratorium, so do you want that on next week to set?
They've requested, they've recommended a moratorium, it doesn't do anything automatically.
Right, yeah.
And it doesn't necessarily, it's not like a moratorium, a speeding permit or something like that. It's something that would have to come before you anyway and be considered, and you obviously have the discretion to approve or not and whatnot. So I think at the moment, we probably wouldn't be drafting up anything immediately on that. We'd work with the planning board and talk about something to get to you.
Right.
Okay.
Would that be for our next meeting?
Probably not.
Okay. Okay. Public forum. Before, I just want to say a thank you to Mrs. Barbara Pelletier for our new banners. Notice them? And to Joe Souza for handing them. Thank you. Okay, Joe Souza, private ambulance service. Thank you, I'll be quick.
Well, for members that didn't live in the town in the 80s, we at one time had a priv, we tried a private ambulance service, and for several reasons, the town decided to go away from it. I've recently been looking at Central Coventry, and they were also looking at privatizing. I spoke to Representative Macbeth, and I looked at some of the numbers that they came in with, and with some of the problems we've had, you know, staffing our fire department, I wonder if maybe we should not look again into privatizing ambulance services. I just looked, for instance, at Universal Ambulance, who actually provides a better service than the town is able to provide, as far as the amount of ability to handle emergency. The only thing I just want to say was also, at one time, we had a volunteer fire department, and the volunteers basically were there to train and to assist the fire department, but we still had a full-time fire department paid. But as full-time firefighters retired, the volunteers were able to come in, and that was the incentive to be a volunteer, that you would receive the training, and then when one of the regular firefighters retired, that you'd be eligible to move into that slot. And the advantage was that they were trained, so that you didn't go through that learning curve, you knew who you were getting because they had been around the station. So, you know, if there was going to be, you know, problems as far as conflict with personnel, you already knew who the person was. And for the most part, it was local people who wanted to be on the force and were not going to leave just because they could get $10 more an hour down the road. So, two things that, you know, I think that maybe this town needs to start looking into. One would be to look at some form of a private ambulance service, where the ambulance service would be private and the firefighters would be firefighters. And the second would be to try to get volunteers back in town. And as I said, I understand that you're not going to, like, ring the bell and guys are going to leave their job and come and fight the fire. You're still going to have paid, full-time firefighters. But when those firefighters resign, you have somebody to come into that slot who's already trained and ready to go, and knows the equipment, knows the personnel, and we know that he can work well with the other personnel. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public hearings and public presentations. Planning Board Chair, Stephen Hughes, presentation of Planning Board Annual Report. Mr. Hughes?
Good evening again. I think it was distributed to everybody on the board, and I'm just here to see if you have any questions pertaining to it.
Excuse me, just shut that door, please.
Just a little bit.
Yeah, just a little. Can't we close it just a little, though?
Those Harbor Commission folks are rowdy characters.
Well, they think they're kicking the butt the way.
No, you can't close it all the way.
Can't close it all the way, but just, all right.
Thank you. Thanks to you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Just another point, Mr. Teitz, did the council need something further from the planning board in order to put forward a moratorium on any zone changes in that area?
No, I don't think they need anything further from the planning board, but we need to draft a formal resolution for the moratorium, rather than just a recommendation.
I just want to make sure it wasn't anything they're waiting for from us.
No.
Okay. Anything from the council?
In the meantime, Mr. Hughes, why don't you just give us an overview? Just basically what the planning board has done in the last year, just briefly. High points? Low points?
What we always do.
No, it's just been several subdivisions. There were administrative subdivisions that we handled. There were zone changes that we recommended or took from the council for recommendations and looked at those. We worked on the challenge grant on the zone change for both the Bliss Four Corners and the Main Road. We dealt with the library, the Tiverton Library, and their parcel for the building. Basically, it's what we always do, it's just what happens to be in front of us in any given year. The annual report is something new. We never did that before, so it's just presented for your information to keep you up to speed on what we've been up to for the last year.
Great.
It's also, too, because it's on TV, it makes the public aware of what the planning board does. So if you want to highlight the activities that the planning board has done over the last year, this is the opportunity to do that.
I have a couple of quick and dirty comments and questions. What stands out to me is, or at least, when I think about the planning board, I think of sort of two separate distinct roles. One is very, so microcosmic, it's plan review and subdivision administration, I suppose is the word. All that very granular kind of engineering and detail-oriented stuff. And then I see the second kind of macrocosmic universe that you folks work in, which is the, I think, what everybody would consider planning, kind of long-range planning for land use in the town. How do we, okay, I will say it this way. How do we achieve any sort of comprehensive zoning change or comprehensive zoning review in the current climate and in the current administrative makeup that we have now with a planning board and a planning department and all, half volunteers and a small staff? How do we get that sort of review?
What we're currently doing is that we have the, we've hired an outside planning group, the Cecil Group, to guide us through the process of, and making the proper changes to the commercial areas that we're looking at. The challenge grant was a grant that was given to us by the Newport County Chamber of Commerce. We used that money to put out an advertisement for a consulting planner, took those applications and chose one, and gone through the process of several meetings with them, sidewalks with them, public meetings with them, in order to get feedback from the community, and then develop the layout, the design guidelines for those areas, and what part of those areas that are going to be encompassed within the change. And that, right now, is the process that we need to go through in the situation that we're working under.
And that's for North Tiverton or Main Road, whatever we're calling that program, and Bliss Corners? Is that, those are the two primary?
Those are currently the two that we're working on that are soon to go to public hearing.
Is there an idea of what's next, or how we turn this, which seems like the grant may be an isolated thing, funding is, you know, we never know? How do we roll that into something more permanent or something more sustainable?
A full-time planner.
Okay.
So.
I wasn't trying to get there.
A full-time planner, without a full-time planner, we need to hire outside help, so the only other way to do it without going through the grant process, well, I won't say the only way, because we're going to have to still continue to change other zoning areas in town.
Right.
And that will have to be, that will have to come out of our budget. So we have to budget for that to proceed in the process to get the rest of the town rewritten.
And that presumably, there's a hierarchy for areas that you feel are important going forward, and obviously?
What we're looking at, what we're trying to accomplish is to try and get the commercial areas done.
Yeah.
Before we go into residential. So we've done the industrial park, we've hit the commercial areas, the general commercial areas. So we're going to need to go to Village Commercial and Waterfront.
Is Highway Commercial still a district, or is that?
Highway Commercial still is a district, yes.
All right. Well, good. And this has been about a year and a half or so with the Cecil Group? It's been, I feel like it's been about a year or so.
It's a year and a half to two years.
Okay. So that gives us a good barometer of how long we expect each of these kind of pockets of work to take place.
We'd like some of them to move a little bit faster. I mean, we were pretty spread out on this. Incorporated all of Main Road, and then all Bliss Four Corners, so hopefully that the other areas won't take quite as long.
Excellent. Well, great. Thanks.
Anything else?
I have a couple of quick clarification questions. Just for the Tiverton crossings, I see the review process should be ongoing for 2014?
We imagine so, yes.
Right, how, what does that exactly mean, timeline-wise? Are we expecting it in a year, two years?
It's hard to say, because we don't have an application for them to this point. As each month goes by, Kate will make a phone call to their office, to their contact person, to see if they're going to have materials into us in time to be on the next agenda. Each month goes by, they've given us a different reason why they're not ready yet, what they're currently working on, what's holding them up. So we're waiting for their master plan application, so as of now, there's nothing in front of us.
So as far as the amendments for the zoning map, zoning text, and comprehensive community plan, do we know what those need to be?
That will all be part of the master plan, the master plan application.
Do we know what those amendments need to be right now?
We have a good idea what they are. They're not cut in stone because they haven't, we've talked about them.
Right, understandably, yes.
So, but we don't know if they're going to make any changes to it before they come to us with them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hughes, and please give our thanks to the planning board for all their hard work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. Town Council sitting as the Board of Licensing, non-advertised licenses. Robert Vital doing business as East Coast Wholesale, requests approval of fireworks permit at 1560 Bogomash Road, Route 177, Flea Market, from April 12, 2014 to October 13, 2014, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is Mr. Vital here?
Ah.
Yes.
This is going to be my third year requesting permission for a license. I spoke with the fire chief earlier, and he's here tonight. Basically, I'm going to conduct sales on the various weekends that I had listed, and every day during the month of June, leading up until the weekend following the Fourth of July. All sales are done in daylight hours. Excess fireworks stored in a secure vehicle that's permanently marked as holding explosives.
Okay. Chief?
Yes, they had a fireworks permit last year, and we have no problems with it. There is some updates to the code that we're working on right now, so we have not met with them, but we hope to meet with them within the next week or so to get that, but we would request approval.
Okay. Okay, anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Vital?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
The only question I have is holiday license?
Yes.
Okay.
He is, I spoke with him, he was here earlier this evening, and for whatever reason, he didn't think he needed the holiday one, but he does.
Okay.
So I told him, we'll put it on the next meeting, because there'll be no holiday between now and the next meeting. I'm still on Easter Sunday.
Then I'll make a motion that we approve the fireworks license to Robert Vital. Is it Vital or?
Either one.
What's your name? Doing business as East Coast Wholesale, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Anything else from the council? Say none. All those in favor? Congratulations, Mrs. Town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Charles McKee, 65 Beach Avenue, Tiverton, requests approval of annual renewal of private detective's license, subject to meeting all legal requirements, recommendation of police chief. Is Mr. McKee here?
No.
And the chief's not here? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I would move we grant a private detective's license renewal to Charles McKee for a term of April 13, 2014 to April 12, 2015, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Bisco Contracting Corp., 20 Development Street, Florida, request approval of street excavator license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Mr. Bisco? Nope. Okay, and Mr. Belucci is not here?
I mean, he looks to be, I wonder.
Excuse me, Bisco is here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you want to come up?
Mike Bisco, representing Bisco Contracting Corp., I think it's pretty straightforward. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Just a question, because I don't recall. Is this your first time getting one in Tiverton?
Yes, I am a Tiverton resident, and this is the first time.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the council? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we grant a street excavator license to Bisco Contracting Corporation, Fall River, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? All set. Congratulations very much. Thank you. Okay. Alejandro Artiega, doing business as Palachi's Ice Cream Company, 237 Suffolk Avenue, Pawtucket, requests renewal of peddler's license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is Mr. Artiega here? Nope, I remember this from last year. Anything from the council? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I would move that we grant a peddler's license, is it peddler's license or peddlers and hawkers? Just peddlers?
It's just peddlers.
It's just peddlers, okay. He's not a hawker, he's just a peddler. To Alejandro Artiega, doing business as Palachi's Ice Cream Company, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Appointments and resignations. Appointment of an interim hobbymaster, Tyler Loomis, 89 John Dugan Road. Is Mr. Loomis here?
He's standing at the door.
Ah.
How are you, Mr. Loomis? Good.
Okay. We have the luxury of having your resume in front of us, and unfortunately, people out there in TV land don't. So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
I live in Tiverton, I've.
If you speak closer to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks.
I live in Tiverton, I've worked with, assisted the hobbymaster for three years now, Dave Vanya for two years, and then the new one, I assisted him for a little bit. I work at a boatyard up in Portsmouth, full-time up there.
Great. And I understand you have now turned 18?
May 9, I will.
Okay, good. Okay. All right. Anything from the council?
Just that.
Just that.
Uh, I think.
What? I'm sorry, he's seventeen.
Yeah.
It would have to be effective.
It would have to be effective.
On his birthday.
Yeah. May 19th, did you say?
May 9th.
May 9th.
And the harbor commission.
Today is what, April?
7th.
7th. Okay.
Okay. And is harbor commission? Recommendation from a harbor commission?
Dave? Is this the first two weeks on the thing?
You look awfully familiar.
Yeah, I know, I, I go from, I go from the fire into the fire pan, uh, from the fire pan into the fire, whatever. Um, yeah, um, the harbor commission has already discussed this, um, wherein, uh, pretty unanimous, uh, that, you know, Tyler should be, uh, the interim harbor master. Um, problem is, for a month, we don't have a harbor master, so, just keep that in mind.
Okay.
I mean, we have a harbor commission who may be so gracious.
Nice try.
Nice try. Talk to the budget committee first. And we'll go from there.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Anything else from the council? Okay, then I want to entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, appoint, thank you, having a hard time today, appoint Tyler Loomis interim harbor master effective May 9th.
I just think you'd wanna say, assume, um, condition upon there not being a permanent harbor master appointed by that time.
Fair enough.
It's probably not gonna happen, but just in case.
Just in case.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor? Congratulations, Mr. Loomis.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Unfinished business, Chief Blakely, update on status of in-street pedestrian crossing sign on Main Road and area Coastal Roasters Coffee Shop.
He's not here, Coastal Roasters.
Mr. Chief is not here, but does.
Somebody wanna pretend to be the chief?
Oh, at least he's here.
Lisa?
I just came to your chief.
All right.
He submitted a written report. Yeah. Do you wanna move to receive and file? And let him come back next month, next meeting if he wants to?
Uh, right, yeah, I think we'll, we'll.
It requires no action by us.
That's correct.
DOT is.
It's just a report. I'll, I'll read the report. Uh, "Subject of agenda request, main road pedestrian crossing sign, I respectfully request to provide town council with an update on the status of the proposed crosswalk on Main Road vicinity of Coastal Roasters Coffee Shop. The original crosswalk location would have resulted in the loss of six to eight parking spots, a serious concern to business owners. The new proposed location of the sidewalk will be approximately 80 feet south of the original site. This location will provide for an approved sightline for motorists traveling in either direction when approaching the crosswalk, as well as pedestrians utilizing the crosswalk. Because the location now incorporates the area where a fire hydrant is located and parking is currently prohibited in this location, this location will result in a loss of a total of only two parking spots. The new location has already been approved by the state DOT."
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's written. Further.
In front of the doughboy.
Good, it's a good place. Okay.
Uh, I don't know if we need a motion, just to receive and file. So, moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
We needed it.
Motion carries. Okay.
So, that will eliminate, I don't know why I'm asking this, but that will presumably eliminate that little flaggy thing in the middle of the road? Never mind, never mind.
It's gonna move down to where the other one is.
What do you call it, the little laggy?
The little flaggy thing.
pedestrian crossing, sandwich boy.
Is that a technical term?
It's a gizmo, actually. Gizmo.
Hey, financial business, Treasurer Denise Sout, request approval of master lease agreement between Town of Tiverton and US Bancorp for new DPW truck.
I don't see her.
Denise is not here, but I've been, I've been told that she requested that I respond to this, um, and I have reviewed there, there is a lease agreement which I reviewed and I'm preparing an opinion letter. We've used, um, another company previously for financing of our, um, significant capital expenditures, that being All American Investment Group, and, um, this other one, US Bancorp, she, she went out and solicited, um, the, for financing bids, and as you can see, they're much cheaper, they're at 1.89%.
Yeah.
As opposed to 2.975% for interest rates. So, looking for a, uh, approval of the town council to, uh, enter into the lease with US Bancorp.
Okay. I have a question. This terminology is unfamiliar to me, master lease, and in the same phraseology, they say, to finance the purchases of, those two words don't usually appear in the same sentence. I don't understand, we usually finance, what is it? Is this a master lease and then at the end of it, we buy it for a dollar or something?
Um, well, that, that's the actual lease term, is what it is, we currently have a master lease with All American Investment Group, and so, whenever it's been, when we're getting something new, a new fire truck or whatever, new ambulance, um, they do basically a supplemental fin, financing of the document. The terms of the basic lease they provided are the same, um, and then we add the other material to it and the terminology, but the, you know, it doesn't have to come back to you each time because you've already approved the essential lease financing.
Okay.
Um, now, we're proposing doing it with US Bancorp, um, and again, I mean, that's, that's one of the advantages of Denise has done this, is taken this out and shopped it around.
Yeah.
To try to get the best financing.
So, but that, those are the arrangements that, uh, 'cause there's a underlying document presumably that outlines our.
Yes. Right, there's a master lease, and then if we were adding some, going forward, we go back to them and find out which one has the better price again. We don't have to go through redoing the entire master lease again, we just do an addendum, um, I'm trying to think, what's the word I'm looking for, um, future advances on the financing, like a, like a, a financing agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Including future advances, so they would, we'd just do an addendum for the, each additional piece of equipment as it came up.
Okay.
Okay, anything else from the council? Okay, I want to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the master lease agreement between the Town of Tiverton and US Bancorp, subject to, uh, the attached, um, supplemental information, terms and conditions and whatever else.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Council propose optional budget or resolution. Anything from the council?
Mr. President, I distributed and sent electronically the completed budget from the Budget Committee to the council, that's gonna go out to be printed this week, but we put that on there just in case you, uh, wanted to take any action on your own. But I'm also distributing, this was last year's resolution regarding the ability, the town's ability to sell Monquit School, Judson Community Center, this, any of that, and I wasn't sure whether you wanted to consider something for this year's ballot as a resolution in case the community center, this wastewater leaves it and you wanna do something with that. So, it's just being distributed in case that's what you wanna do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, I, I would just make changes to the.
Yeah.
To the resolution, obviously.
Nonquit's gone. Nonquit's gone.
Is there any other one on it?
And I, I don't know if we'd want, uh, excuse me, Senior Center Town Hall and DPW on it at this time. I don't believe we have any plans in this year of selling any of those buildings.
So, it would just.
Those buildings, probably not.
So, I, I would, I would think we would speak only to the Judson Street Community Center.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mr. Teitz, do we need that in the form of a motion?
I would also suggest some additional edits to the language. Let me just read this. So, the, the phraseology is after the semicolon, "Provided that any such transfer is at not less than fair market value." First and foremost, it's a funny sounding sentence, is at not less than is a strange way to write things, but Andy and I have gone back and forth on this, that, that really doesn't mean anything, really.
Fair, fair market value is what you can get for it.
Essentially, market value is what two, a willing buyer and a willing seller will mutually agree to pay and receive for an asset. Um, so, I think it, it gives an implication that there's a certain threshold, but that, I don't think that is really the case.
Well, um, no, I think the, the issue, and, and the funny language is because that was added later.
Yeah.
The original draft of this years ago, whatever, didn't include that, provided that, and a council at some, some point in time added it to it. So, that's why the, the language is funny. Um, it, assuming you only have one person buying to buy it, fair market value doesn't really mean much, 'cause whatever that, by definition, if you can only get one person to buy it and you've shopped it around publicly, then what that person is willing to pay for it is your fair market value. Where it makes a difference is if you have multiple people buying for it, and, you know, one person wants to pay $100,000 and turn it into a McDonald's restaurant, and somebody else wants to pay $50,000 and turn it into a nonprofit homeless shelter. Without this phrase, the town council has latitude to say, well, a homeless shelter is something we need more than another fast food restaurant, we're going to sell it, we're gonna sell it for less to that particular use, it's a, you have that ability. With this language here, you wouldn't have that ability. You would have to, if you have more than one bidder and you're still going forward to sell it, you're gonna effectively have to sell it to the highest bidder, assuming all else is the same, cash transactions or equal financing, you're gonna have to sell it to the highest one if you do sell it, because that would be the fair market value.
See, my argument would be that that doesn't necessarily, um, the highest bid doesn't necessarily by default make it market value or fair market value, but.
Well.
We could talk about this for a long time, I'm sure.
That's, yes, and there's actually an interesting court case on re, revaluation stuff out in Aragantit, and the judge saying, just because somebody overpaid for their house, that didn't make it market value.
Right.
Um, but there's, there's market value from a business, a real estate business point of view and market value from a legal point of view, and my view of the market value of the legal view is what the highest one. And my recommendation would be to take, to strike that, if you're gonna do it, to strike that last clause, um, so that you're, you know, you're not constrained by it, you'll, you'll act in the best interest of the town by a majority vote anyway, um, and if the voters don't like what you've done, they'll throw you out, but, um, I don't, but that's up to you, it's up to you.
Yeah, I, I think the language just creates more complication than it, it settles, and I would be, my, my recommendation would just be to strike it, um, because what I think, the unintended consequence of language like this is, um, I would make the argument that it actually has prevented transactions from occurring, uh, rather than enabling the highest value. Oftentimes, there's an RFP or, or, or request for bids, you get the bid, the council doesn't like any of them, and instead of, um, selling it to somebody less than the highest bidder, they don't do anything with it. So, um, I think it doesn't compel, uh, the highest price for the property, it rather, um, prevents tran, a transaction from occurring more often than not, so, I think it just is, it's, I think it doesn't really help anything. I mean, certainly, we can, this resolution can be a heck of a lot shorter, resolve that pursuant to blah, blah, blah. The town council was hereby authorized to transfer ownership of the Judson Street Community Center, period.
Yeah, I, I have no issue with that. And anyone from the council?
And a motion.
I don't know, I, just to play devil's advocate, I, I'd look at it as, um, we're setting, you know, a precedent there saying that we'll sell it at fair market value and that we won't, there won't be any hanky panky or any funny business, that, that's the, that's the bar, that's the measurement, and, you know, it's done as we award other contracts that, it's specific, it says, we'll sell it at fair market value. I just think it's, it's useful that it's there.
The, the argument I would have to that is that, um, fair market value is not an empirical measure, and it's not something that is established beforehand, and so, the measure of what, what fair market value, and I think that's what, the, the false sense of security that when you say, we'll, we'll, we'll get market value for it, that, that is a number that is already established, and you will sell it for no less than that, and it really, um, it doesn't really shake out that way. I mean, if we have multiple bids, then I guess the language that you would want is to say, sell to the highest bidder, um, rather than selling it to, you know, at no less than fair market value. I don't think either of those are particularly appropriate.
Uh, how, how about this suggestion, provided that any such transfer is in the best interest of the Town of Tiverton? That way, obviously, we'd have to have to make the decision on whatever council is in at that time as to what that building is going to be used for, or what that piece of land is going to be used for. So, obviously, it would be in what's in the best interest of the town, so that way, it does not send a bar as far as what, quote-unquote, dollar figure might be.
I, I think that's fine, I think that's a purely symbolic phraseology, um, that I'm trying very hard not to be offended that we don't work in the best interest of the Town of Tiverton as a, um, matter of course, but I'm not particularly easily offended, so I'm.
So, it should be assumed.
Well, what I'm saying, it is, yeah, it, it gives us the, yeah, I think that's fine.
That's fine.
So, what does that? Yeah, what does that mean?
So, I'm just gonna say, resolve that pursuant to section 204 of the town, sorry, resolve that pursuant to section 204 of the town charter, the town council is hereby authorized to transfer ownership of the Judson Street Community Center, provided that such transfer is in the best interests of the town.
Yes. Okay, any further discussion on this? I will entertain a motion.
Still moved?
We have a motion and second?
Second.
Yeah, second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay.
I'd just like to say, I'd just like to say one thing, just so that pe, people in the audience and in TV land is aware, that the proposed budget is a 1.6% increase, and what, what it means to the taxpayer is, uh, it's, um, on a $300,000 house, it would be an increase of $75 a year. Um, if you look back to the last 10 years, this is the lowest increase.
We've had in 10 years.
We've had in 10 years, and I'd like to thank the Budget Committee and the School Committee and the Town Council for doing an unbelievably good job.
Thank you. Okay. New business, Barbara Pelletier, update on tourism. And see, now, Barbara, we can actually respond.
Yeah, we did talk to her. I know. Isn't that amazing? And I have, I had, um, last week dropped a, a communique that addresses some of the points that I'd been trying to say to you for years and years, maybe two, three years, and I've actually, I came back and then, um, reviewed them and spoke to Evan Smith, who was here twice, encouraging the tourism as part of the growth of the town, so, um, I'm here to answer any questions, uh, that you might have, and, uh.
Um, yeah, just, just again, because we, we have this in front of us and our residents out there in TV land don't, so if you just wanna, just give an overview, you don't have to read everything, but just give an overview of.
Right. Well, tourism and travel is increasingly becoming a very, very important part of the Rhode Island economy, it's about a third of it, and Rhode Island is uniquely positioned, um, since we have open spaces, the water and everything else, and especially the Oriental tourist likes all of this, they like the fresh food, the fresh fish and the farming, um, fresh farm product, that is one of the also growing economies of the. That is one of the also growing economies of the state is the fresh produce. So I think Tiverton being a sort of a farm-based community can hook into all of this. The one thing that I would like to emphasize is that we should jump on things, that we should enthusiastically embrace things and not let them drag out because eventually some other community is going to pick up on it and, and run with it. Bristol just is getting a new hotel. Our hotel is still in limbo, kind of. So if, if we could just enthusiastically embrace ideas and, and facilitate, not selling out to anything, but facilitate moving ahead, I think it would help. And, and some of these things that we can build on with our assets are actually quite inexpensive. For instance, I think we can maybe get a donation of a mounted observation binoculars on top of Fort Barton. I think it would be an extremely good thing to have. And now that the problem of accessibility for the handicapped, I think, has been sort of resolved with the purchase of that lot of, next to Fort Barton. So I don't know if that's open yet, but I think once it opens, the access, the handicap access opens, we should publicize it. And it's little things like that, I think, that can make the thing flow. We in Warren, for instance, they have all of these art tours. I don't think we're there yet, but I think someday we can consider it. Bristol has all the banners and that's why Nancy and I are on a banner promotion, right? We have Sukonah Wingeds right down the road and that is bound to expand because Alex and Arnie doesn't just sit there, they're going to make something happen and we can easily, since anybody going to Little Compton is coming through us, let's, you know, let's seize the opportunity. Riverside Drive, I would love to see a walk, a boardwalk or something like that, but I think that's a ways off. The Volvo Boat Races, as Evan Smith told you, I think we don't have much to offer. But I think we can think of that in the future when there's something similar and maybe tag into it. But the thing is, you have to prepare and that's, you can't, you just have to think We have Fogland Beach, which is under, which is famed for its windsurfing, and yet we don't make much of it. And I think part of the problem in town is that we have all of these boards of, and commissions. They all have great ideas, but I think every so often, they should meet as a group, formulate some sort of master plan, not duplicate anything, but just go, agree on one thing and all focus their energy on one thing and another, not one, not two, three groups doing the same thing. Maybe that's what I'm trying to say. I think we should have communications in that way.
Actually, I think as far as that goes, there is a open space recreation and I think conservation plan that hasn't been updated since 1988.
Right, I think if we get the open spaces, historical commission, all of these, recreation, I think, plays a huge part in that. I think recreation can, can do a huge.
And I, I believe the open space made a commitment to begin the update to that plan.
Oh, good.
So we'll have to follow up with them, but I think that was, one of their goals was to update that plan because it hasn't been updated in decades.
And, and you know, I can easily understand how some, somebody who's been on a commission for a while, then somebody else comes in, tries to do the same thing and they say, oh, what, why are they doing that? You know, what's, what's she doing or he doing about that? They're stepping in my territory. And I, I don't think for the most part, anybody has these thoughts, it's just that you don't know. And you ask questions and you, nobody has answers. And it's, it's part of the growing mechanism, I believe.
Anything else from the council?
I'd like to add, with these ideas that you presented, you have, you listed a lot of, a lot of the, I guess, nice places to visit in Tiverton. And I think one thing that would help bring tourism here is maybe we can increase what we have like for events. Like last year, we had the Tiverton celebrates.
Correct.
Which will help bring people, hey, there's, that's going on in Tiverton. We haven't seen, well, I want to see some fireworks, I want to see shows, parade, whatever, because we haven't had that in town in years. It was actually very nice to have that last year and it actually brought a lot, I don't know, maybe people have brought to the town. But we keep building on that, that's going to be a nice little destination for us if people can go and say, wow, there's also this, there's also this here, we can go see this. And it'd be really good to see some, maybe more events, of course. It's a lot of time to organize.
Well, you know, we had that, we had that similar years and years ago, and actually, I have old slides of it, and it was a bigger wind. And then somehow or other people, some people started to complain about traffic and all of that. So that erodes the whole thing. For instance, we used to have the pooch party up at the town farm.
Yes.
It was after season, we picked up everything, but Recreation decided that we shouldn't have it anymore because they don't want, they banned dogs from anything. So then we shifted our efforts to Little Compton and it works. But it's little things like that, I think the whole community has to embrace something and, and be behind it. And okay, it's an, it's an inconvenience, it's the same thing with the singing out for hunger. Okay, so maybe there's going to be a little bit more noise for one or two nights a year, but keep, you know, stuff some cotton in your ear and live with it. And it's, it's, but you can make such a huge, huge problem out of these little things. And I, I don't want to make fun of this, but it just seems silly. It, it just, and I'm not believing anybody's opinion.
And we're just trying to find a way, so how do we improve life in Tiverton? How do we lower taxes? How do we do all these things?
Exactly.
And we go through the budget, we go line by line through the budget, where can we cut? Where can we cut? Eventually, you're not going to be able to cut anything anymore. You're just going to get to that point. And we're, I think we're almost getting to that point. And we're about to actually start moving some services, right?
A hotel tax would be wonderful, so would more restaurants, smiling visitors.
We need a way, right, we need a way to start increasing our commercial tax base. That is, and if we can grow it like 1% a year over the next 10 years, we actually might have taxes screwed up. I mean, that might actually be a possibility, but.
Well, it's better than the industrial park that's sitting there and until we do something, until EDC does something with that industrial park, put in a huge roller skating ramp, ring, whatever. But anything, you know, anything right now will help and it doesn't mean we can have one or the other, we can have both, but that tourism thing is a very imminent, doable kind of thing, especially if we do get a hotel. Eventually, we might get our bed and breakfasts online because it's a, at the State House, there's a very, great possibility that they're going to tax even one bedroom kind of bed and breakfast.
Yep.
So whether or not people think that, well, State doesn't have any business being in my bed, it's going to happen. And to the fairness of the big hotels that have to fork it over and that, it, the same with those air bread and breakfasts in, I think San Francisco, there is a lawsuit now against the company that books them without taxes on.
All right, anything else from the council? All right, thank you so much.
Anything else?
No, very nice reply.
Great. And you know what, crosswalks and sidewalks or something like that, at the four corners might greatly enhance the safety because the four corners is a very.
The state road, we've been having this conversation.
I know, it's a big problem.
Well, we had a start near Costa Roasters, so maybe that's the beginning.
Right. No, but because I do see the, the four corners very much diminishing in volume of traffic and that's unfortunate because it is a great asset.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, bids and requests for proposals. Tax Assessor requests authorization to award bid to Vision Government Solutions for statistical reappraisal of real property effective December 3, 2014 for $130,000. Mr. Roberts?
Good evening, Town Council, how are you?
Good.
I'm here before the council tonight to recommend the award of the revaluation to Vision Government, as mentioned, for $130,000. They did submit two bids, one for 108,565. I am going with the higher option of 130. That includes a software conversion. I feel that the net result to the town, the cost for that, is $8,500 after the state reimbursement. The current software that we have is usable. The issue is that it's slowly becoming outdated, it doesn't have all the latest bells and whistles, most importantly, a GIS feature. So what that means is, right now, we cannot connect my Kama database to our GIS database easily. This will integrate both of them and I can make changes on the fly through the GIS system into the software instead of having to repeatedly data enter each individual parcel. So I think because of the capabilities of the new software versus its costs, that's why I'm recommending the award be for the $130 option.
Anything from the council?
What's the budget for this?
On an annual basis, we put $53,000 into revaluation restricted budget. That number is based on two updates plus a full revaluation. So over the nine-year period of those three, three evaluations, we would be fully funded. The estimate for these updates are 135,000. That factors into that 53,000 annual budget item. So this is, in essence, slightly undebutated.
And this, this is a, what, three-year?
This is a three-year update. I will let you know, part of also my reasoning to go to the software option. I did talk to Vision and if we were to go to the option of not converting the software, they will only support that for an additional three years. There is currently a bill before the General Assembly to change the revaluation cycle from every three years to five years. They will not go on beyond that three-year period of maintaining that software.
So we're going to have to convert it either now or in, at the end of that contract or?
At the end of that three-year period. We would have to go out to then, in essence, rebid just software and that can get a little tricky.
So this revaluation contract would keep, would, would be for a revaluation and software maintenance or is that something?
No, that, that would be all-inclusive.
That's all-inclusive, okay. And it's just for the, for the term of three years?
Correct.
And the GIS module is something that we don't have presently?
We don't currently have that, no. The software that we currently have is from the vendor Certified Revaluation Company. They've conducted our last two evaluations. I've been very pleased with them. Their software was actually written, let me backtrack for a second, so it was through Certified Revaluation. Certified Revaluation was brought out two years ago by Vision Appraisal. The programmer and the project manager from Certified Revaluation has also been hired by Vision. So it's going to be the continued support by those individuals that wrote the software. So the conversion from, from CRC to Vision should be fairly seamless.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
Just one technical question on the statistical revaluation. How does, I, I think I understand how that works, never mind, I know how that works for residential properties and small commercial properties. When we get to more complicated, larger scale, commercial, industrial and multifamily projects, how does the statistical refile work or is that, is it just an appraisal on those particular properties that we implement?
Yeah, during the statistical, for, the only difference between those two type of evaluations is people out in the field. During the four, we go from house to house. The update, it's all done by sales analysis. However, during both revaluation types, we do request from income-producing properties, their income and expense statements. So we will be taking a look at their incomes, those larger properties, as well as the smaller income-producing ones as well.
Okay. Are those larger ones, do we require a narrative, full narrative appraisal for those for, during this?
There are a few properties that have requested that, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the council?
The only question, all right, sorry, I said I had one question, I have two questions. We have essentially three bids, 128, 130 and 145. That's correct, right?
Correct.
And we're going with Vision, which is that, where you're requesting we go with one, the 130, which is actually 2,000 more than the lowest bid, but we've got a substantial amount of backup that their software is far superior.
Vision over the Northeast appraisal system, in my opinion, is, is far superior. We did have an issue, it gets a little tricky with these companies because they have merch and not merch.
Yeah, because they're not apples to apples.
Well, not in that regard. In that regard, we, when I first got hired back in 2005, we were under a revaluation. The company that was doing that revaluation was Appraisal Resource. They have now morphed into Northeast Appraisal. So in essence, it's really the same company. The only difference is the principal is left, so they renamed the company. The software that they utilize, although it's gone through some updates, is essentially the same software. When they tried converting our data back in 2005, it did not work. Originally, they tried their own in-house software. That was a terrible failure. Then they tried this Success Pro software, which is actually a third vendor. It's actually not a Northeast product, it's actually a Patriot Property product. They tried converting the data with the Success Pro and then we still had some issues. Ultimately, because it was our first update, the state still had some monies that they allowed us to convert our, the original data that failed those two conversions over to Certified Revaluations. And during that conversion, we had no issues. So Success Pro is really the software that Northeast currently utilizes. It, I, I don't like it, it is clunky, I have concerns about the conversion. They have recently gone through a very new update of that software and they're still working out the bugs. I'd rather not be the beta site for that.
Yeah, it would, it would seem like a reasonable thing to have these, have this sort of system bifurcated. There's data and then there's the software and really they, I don't know, it just seems, it seems like a strange thing to every three years potentially transfer to a different database that is now going to have, I mean, it just seems like a total waste of time.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it doesn't quite work that way, the way that's currently.
Yeah.
There had been some discussion about getting a statewide system.
Yeah.
Massachusetts has one.
I almost suggested that.
But even with Massachusetts, where there is a statewide system, cities and towns at their own discretion can opt to go to a different software vendor if they so choose. So even Massachusetts, where they do have a statewide system, they do have multiple systems that the assessors are using.
Well, I mean, ultimately, we want the ease of use and stability for the, for the database for.
Some of the issues, obviously, is proprietary programming.
Yeah.
So if I was to use Company A's software versus Company B doing the field work, Company A then would have to allow them to begin to the database. And right now, there's not a company out there that truly offers a standalone software suite from being separate from doing a revaluation project as well.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Anything else from the council?
This has been a lesson for us all.
I will entertain a motion.
I'll move that we award the bid to Vision Government Solution. I'll move that we award the bid to Vision Government Solutions for our statistical reappraisal effective December 3, 2014, for $130,000.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, council.
Town Administrator, Items and Announcements. Mr. Wojcicki.
Very quickly, Mr. President, I want to pick up on something that Mrs. Pelletier said, because we are beginning to go through the comprehensive planning process, rewriting that document. And many of the themes that she emphasizes can be worked into different parts of that document in terms of, what are the goals of tourism and promotion as part of an economic development strategy, an economic development element in the plan. And I would just encourage Mrs. Pelletier, as well as anyone who has an interest in those topics, to make sure they participate in the public and open process of the comprehensive plan. It's a, it's a time and a place to inject real life into these documents that otherwise go on a file cabinet somewhere at statewide planning and become a tool that some people use against the town for various legal reasons, as opposed to a spirited, positive, forward-looking document. So there's a real opportunity when this work comes up. Secondly, the annual CDBG process is being, that's the Community Development Block Grant process. Now, the town will assess its priorities for various projects that will be eligible. Eligible projects benefit people of low to moderate income all around the town, but especially in the northern Tiverton area. And my observation is that, in the past, the process was somewhat closed. It was very efficient, but somewhat closed, and I'm taking a completely different approach. I've asked directors to begin to think about how they would find eligible activities within their departments so that we can come to the council and the planning board with a long list of items that need to be prioritized. But I believe the town is eligible for a significant amount of funds, and we should be making every effort to get our highest priorities funded through that source. That's all I had for this evening. I did, one last thing, really enjoy meeting with the Four Corners Merchants Association because there's a tremendous amount of energy in that room in terms of, in terms of promoting the town and building the town's brand organically. It's not aspirational at all. They're existing businesses, existing thought processes. And as an economic development guy from back when, it was a very enjoyable and very positive experience listening to those different business people think about how to promote the town, promote that particular part of town. And there are a lot of exciting things that they're working on. You'll notice that there was a PUC filing this week for Experience Rhode Island, which is a jitney tour service that goes all around Rhode Island. Very sophisticated, very intelligently drawn tour plans, and there is now one that's going to run to Four Corners. So other people are noticing. It's beginning to pick up some momentum. So lots of things to look forward to. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council, announcement, comments, and questions. Mr. Rutter? Mrs. Jabot? Mr. Lambert?
I'll give you a brief report, both on the commuter rail project and the casino. Last week, I attended a public hearing at St. Patrick's Church sponsored by the Southend Neighborhood Association. And present were a couple of speakers on behalf of the commuter rail, including Gene Fox, who's in charge of that program in Massachusetts. The impression is absolutely no one is opposed to a commuter rail in Fall River. It was enthusiastically received. There was not a dissenting voice anywhere in the hall, which I assume makes sense. I can't think of any reason why Tiverton or this community would be opposed to a commuter rail that will end at the Braga Bridge. But, and I wanted to point out as well that Representative Jay Edwards was there as well. Other than that, I think it's simply a matter of trying to monitor what's happening with the commuter rail program. The indication from the speakers was that we're talking about a 12-year period. That's it. There's no rush into this. And all that's going to depend on, on the funding from Boston. One other issue came up that was on the front page of the Herald, and this relates to the casino. I've reported on that previously in the public hearing that I attended on the casino and made my suggestions at that time. But the Herald News has now reported, and we, Matt was able to get forward a copy of a Chamber of Commerce recommendations to the mayor for the community host agreement that has to be worked out between Fall River and Foxwoods. Included in that, and the Herald News did report on this with the details, Tiverton, most importantly, was included as part of the definition of a surrounding community. That is, the Chamber of Commerce in Fall River was suggesting that we be treated in the same fashion as Lakeville, Freetown, Swansea, Somerset, and Westport. This is a project, again, on which we have absolutely no say whatsoever. Nobody is interested in our opinion, and nobody's asking us to pass a referendum. We will have a casino there regardless of what position, we will have a casino or not have a casino regardless of what position Tiverton takes. However, the Chamber of Commerce was very, was quite specific in identifying Tiverton, I mean, identifying Tiverton by name, and indicating, indicating that it should be treated the same as the other surrounding communities, both with respect to mandatory hiring by Foxwoods. And I think the proposal for the, the communities that I've just identified was that the Foxwoods would, would have to hire 250 to 300 workers, residents of those towns. And further important to Tiverton was that we were identified as one of the surrounding communities for mandatory purchasing from vendors. That is altogether, the proposal from the Chamber of Commerce in Fall River was that Foxwoods would have to spend $35 million from businesses operating in those towns that I've just identified. And again, Tiverton would be included. I think that was very important because, I mean, you simply have to look at a map and recognize we're certainly in a far better position if that casino was positioned where they're talking than, say, Lakeville or Freetown. We're almost next door. As a matter of fact, I think Stafford Road, we're approximately a quarter of a mile away from the proposed casino. So again, it's another issue on which we have no say, but it's, it's something that we have to monitor. One issue that I did speak with, with Mr. Roderick was at least the possible, the thought of possibly acknowledging the, the proposals with a letter to the Fall River Chamber of Commerce. I don't know, I don't think we need a resolution for something like that unless somebody's opposed to it. But I'm not, I'm not saying that we take a position with respect to the casino, but I think it was nice for the Chamber of Commerce to include Tiverton as one of the surrounding communities. And perhaps we could see a, a proposed draft of that from Matt. I, I don't see it as more than a one or two-page letter, and perhaps with a copy going to Mayor Flanagan and a copy to the Economic Development Officer for Fall River, Ken Fiola. Perhaps addressed to the Presidents of the Chamber of Commerce and to the Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, because apparently the proposal, the proposals were passed unanimously by the Directors. That's the report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lambert. And I agree. I mean, just an acknowledgement that we appreciate their, you know, incorporating and keeping Tiverton in mind. And if there is no objection from the council, we'll have Mr. Wojcicki draft that letter and then present it. Okay. Mr. DeMeades? Mr. Pelletier? And I have nothing. So we're moving along. Town Solicitor, Items and Announcements. Tiverton versus James Pelletier, Tiger Tree, report on Superior Court Conference on April 3, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. We did have a conference with Judge Thunberg on, just last Thursday, so I don't have anything in writing for you, but the gist of it was, we were finally able to get the long-delayed actual physical judgment entered, signed by the judge. And we were able to get, moving on the sentencing. Sentencing is going to be set for July 16. Time and exact place uncertain, and the reason for the delay is because the judge has asked for sentencing memos. So we have 45 days until May 15 to draft our sentencing memo, and the other side has 45 days to draft their response till July 1. And then, as I said, July 16 is the date of the hearing.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Is there another case also going on with Tiger Tree?
Yes, there are. There is a civil case as well, yes.
That's, that's with the town, correct?
Yes, that is correct. There's also a civil case between the neighbors and Tiger Tree, which we are not part of.
Right, right.
But there is a civil case between the town and Tiger Tree.
Can we get an update on that?
Well, what we are, what we are doing, the civil judge hasn't wanted to handle it, and what we, we needed to get, we need to get the judgment, we need to get the sentence. And by the way, this has been appealed to the Supreme Court. It actually was appealed prematurely since the order wasn't entered, but it's obviously going to go to the Supreme Court. But we wanted to get that final judgment and the sentencing because that should be controlling in a civil procedure. Since the criminal procedure was beyond a reasonable doubt, and the standard for civil is only a preponderance of the evidence, we can take the criminal judgment to the civil court and say, we've already had it. You don't have to have another trial. It's already been done. But until we get the proper paperwork, we can't do it.
Okay. Okay. Anne McLaughlin versus Tiverton, report on Superior Court hearing on April 7, 2014.
And this was, this was just this morning in Superior Court. Mr. McLaughlin did not show up, and the order was entered this morning that he has 90 days in which to move or remove the building so that it will comply with the zoning ordinance. And if he does not do that within 90 days, he'll be judge in contempt and subject to a fine of $200 per day for each day thereafter. We asked for 500. The judge set it at 200. Now, I have heard that Mr. McLaughlin, I heard subsequently this evening that Mr. McLaughlin said he didn't know that was the date. He didn't know that. He thought it was a different date, and he may move to set it aside. But at least at the moment, this is the situation that we have.
Okay.
And then I would like to ask you to add a third item to the agenda, just to report on the status of Town of Tiverton versus Richard Nantosi and Ann Tosi.
The move that we add for discussion purposes, the matter, Town of Tiverton versus Richard and Ann Tosi.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Tates?
Yes, I'm passing around to you a copy of a decision from Judge Clifton, which we received on Friday afternoon. Thus, it's, that's why it didn't make the agenda. This is not a decision on the merits, but this is a procedural decision. Defendants, Richard and Ann Tosi filed multiple motions to dismiss the proceedings, arguing various procedural defects. And we objected to it. We argued that, A, that those defects did not exist, and B, even if they did, that's the point of getting a new trial in Superior Court. The judge had a slightly different take on it as far as criminal versus civil, but the result is, the judge, in this decision dismissed all of their, all of the defendants' motions to dismiss were denied. So that will be going forward to trial some point in the next month or two. Criminal matters are not scheduled by the parties. You have to wait for the court scheduling office to schedule them.
Anything else, Mr. Tates?
That's it for now.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
I put in the packets a schedule of important dates coming up for the Financial Town Referendum. We now have the budget proposal. I will be adding the Town Council resolution to the ballot. Elector petitions are available. They require 50 qualified elector signatures. They can be returned to the clerk's office by April 22. So I will just wait the time through to see if we get any other petitions. Also, the last date of registered vote for the Financial Town Referendum will be on Monday, April 21. We changed that. We were going to have it on Easter Sunday. And the final canvas after that date will be on April 28, if anyone has any objections to any inclusions or omissions on the final canvas. The public hearing for the Financial Town Referendum will be May 1 at the Tiverton Middle School Cafeteria. The absentee ballots have been sent out to, to our list, list that we would send out to any election. They have until May 5 to return the applications so we can send them out their ballots. By then, I hope to have everything printed. And it also lists the schedule of the times for voting. We're going to try to make this into some type of a poster and put it like at the library. It's on, Dave Robert has set up a kind of bullet area on the homepage for FTR. We'll put the bullet, we'll put the budget in there. We'll put all these dates. We'll put this notice, and we'll try to get it out as much as we can. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Lambert, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, Chapter 42, Section 465A, five-way disposition of town held property industrial park.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, Chapter 42, Section 465A, two-way collective bargaining with Absme and Teamsters.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, Chapter 42, Section 465A, two-way litigation, Town of Tiverton versus LAL Construction, Inc.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, Chapter 42, Section 465A, two-way potential litigation and investigation pursuant to Chapter 42, Section 465A, four-way fire department.
Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, Chapter 42, Section 465A, two-way litigation, Larry Faulkner versus Town of Tiverton.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Motion.